Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Brittany to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Elder Losz? Maringa?
Here.
Norhug?
Here.
Steenstrom?
Here.
Truce?
Here.
Vanderwal?
Here.
And Mayor Mas?
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Sign from the Granville Genesee Congregational Church. So, for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation, and we're going to follow that by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Ram.
Welcome.
Please join me together in prayer. Heavenly Father, we stand before you grateful for all of the doors of opportunity that you have set before us. We pray that as we open these doors and enter them, that we see the new ways that you have given us to serve you. We ask that your Holy Spirit guide us with wisdom and skill to handle all tasks. Father, we ask that you continue to bless our city as you have so richly done. We are ever mindful and thankful for the community that we are in. Lord, bless this meeting, the work before us, and the outcomes. Bless this council. Guide them to work in unison and friendship as they govern our city. Bless our mayor. Give him the courage to lead with open mind and open heart. Bless our first responders and their leaders. Keep them as safe as they work hard to keep us safe. Bless our city workers, all of them, that care for our city, that gives us so much comfort, and let them know that it's not unnoticed. Bless the schools, the businesses, and the churches that so richly provide for our nurturing and our well-being. And, Lord, bless us all with a servant's heart, as we all care for others in our community and in our world. And we ask this as your children who have been saved by your endless love and mercy. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being with us tonight, Pastor. I appreciate it.
Is it Melody parking or is she?
She should be 24. We received notice that Councilmember Elder Losz may not be here this evening. He's asked to be excused. Maybe he'll be coming later, if that's possible. But otherwise, is there a motion to excuse him, just so I don't forget?
Move.
Motion support? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Any opposition, please say no. Great. Let's see. We have the agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve that agenda?
So moved.
Motion support? Any discussion? Comments? No. All those in favor of approving, please say yes. Yes. Any opposition, please say no. We have minutes from our last meeting, August 14. If you had a chance to take a look at those and read through those. Brittany, very nice job. Any additions, corrections? Anything anybody wants to point out, emphasize in there? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes of August 14 meeting? So moved. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Any opposition? No. Okay, great. Next item on the agenda is we have another, as typical per this time of year, the fiscal, old fiscal year and new fiscal year bills. Let's see, that one is a lot more than the other. So, let's do the old fiscal year first, in the amount of about $19,000. Dennis, anything you'd like to point out on those? Jane, anything you want to point out?
The last old fiscal year.
This will be it until next year?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Counsel, any questions about any of the bills in the old fiscal year? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $19,522 for the old fiscal year?
So moved.
Any discussion? Brittany, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maringa?
Yes.
Norhug?
Yes.
Steenstrom?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas?
Yes. Now, for the new fiscal year, a little bit more substantial, about a million, almost a million-two. Dennis, anything on those bills you'd like to point out? Jane, anything in there?
This is the largest bill, just for your information. The check is going to pay for the lower project that they do have going on over at Clean Water Plant right now. This is the first construction bill in that particular project that you approved back in the spring.
Counsel, any comments or questions to Dennis, or Jane, or anybody else about any of the bills on tonight's list for the new fiscal year? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills for the new fiscal year in the amount of $1,191,556.51?
So moved.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Brittany, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Norhug?
Yes.
Steenstrom?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Maringa?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas?
Yes. Okay. Before we have public comment, we're going to have a presentation from the Environmental Sustainability Committee. So, Mitch, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for giving us the memo on the topic. Very nice, very helpful.
Hopefully, since the slides that I have tonight. Can you bring this up, the slides? Oh, the computer looks like. There we go. Awesome. So, yeah, thank you. I really appreciate the time and the agenda. And just a moment of correction, right? Because according to the agenda, I'm Jane Newton, which I'm not. But you all have met me on a number of occasions. Mitch Leachman, I am a member of the Environmental Sustainability Committee. Jane was unavailable, and she asked me to take care of this tonight. And this has been a couple-month progress, if you will, for the committee, as we were just looking for kind of what's next. They've been very busy before I arrived in the city. Let's see if the page buttons work here. They worked earlier. Technical difficulties. It's not getting to advanced. Arrows. The good news is, the slides are just a summary of the documents that I've provided you. So, just use the arrows left and right. Left and right, okay. So, the ESC, the Environmental Sustainability Committee, has been in operation for a while. Again, predates me by quite a bit. And their signature item so far has been the Green Communities Challenge, which you've heard about on more than one occasion, and is a very cool thing that is statewide, has dozens of cities across the state that participate in it. And it's a very interesting way for the city to not only be recognized for sustainability things that you're doing, but also help inspire action within the city on various sustainability items. And the city's been recognized now a couple of years in a row at the introductory bronze level. The committee has solid plans and great expectations for getting advanced to silver next year, and every reason to think that we can get the city to a gold recognition in the future. This program's great, and yet it is not the full bailiwick of sustainability things, right? It's heavily, heavily focused on the hard stuff, right? Infrastructure, emissions, energy, really important stuff, but for a tree hugger like me, just doesn't get me as excited as the critter stuff does. And that's what the National Wildlife Federation's program has the opportunity to help us with, to help the committee, to help the city, in becoming even more green, more sustainable, more inviting for the soft stuff, right? The living resources, the natural resources. Providing mechanisms for developing and doing more with those resources, in addition to, again, what the Green Communities has already been focused on. Let's see, nothing else to add on this particular slide. And I referenced, and you referenced, documents that have been provided to you all in advance. So, there's lots of detail. Hope you had a chance to look at it. Again, the slides are just overviews, but I'm thinking most of the questions that might come up, or that you may have, will be answered in those documents. And again, we'll talk through that if we have the time. So, the Community Wildlife Habitat Program under NWF has two elements. One is this certification of actual habitat, right? So, physical spaces need to be identified and recognized by NWF within the city, okay? So, that's one key element. And then the second key element is this collection of projects over an unlimited amount of time. Could be two years, could be 10 years, just entirely up to the city as to how long this takes. But these two key elements are really important, one being, again, the actual physical resources that the wildlife need recognized through that certification. So, actually, before I do that, so it's important to note that the certification is an opportunity for any type of property, any type of landowner within the city. Could be individual residential landowners, could be institutions like schools, commercial, industrial spaces, even public city-owned property. And there's different points that apply to different types of properties, okay? You need a certain number of points to achieve that level of that piece of the program. Then the outreach projects are going to be education, they could be invasive plant projects like we've already done, they could be cleanups like Buck Creek that just happened. And that's an important point, to emphasize that while there will be new things that are created, new things that are developed, new projects, new programs, within this bailiwick, if you all, again, want to go down this path with NWF, but they don't have to be new programs, right? So, if you have a cleanup like Buck Creek, great. No need to create a new cleanup, no need to create another name, but we would, within this program, receive recognition for that cleanup in future years, if that makes sense. Same thing with the invasive plants. If we do garlic mustard next year, if we expand to other types of invasive plants, again, we just continue to receive recognition for that. So, a couple of slides in here with lots of words on it, lots of different ideas. This particular one is very busy, and by having an organization, or an agency, or a department on here, I do want to be clear, again, this is potential partners, right? This entire effort has not been approved by you all. So, while there's been some conversation, and some of these entities are aware of what the committee's been working on, nobody's made any commitment, nobody's an official partner, right? But we believe, as a group, that this is a great array of potential interested parties that could assist with this effort. Shorter list, the document that, again, I provided you all in advance, has a longer list of potential projects with a disclaimer, just like I already said. Again, it's concepts, it's ideas. There's nothing that's been vetted out, and nothing that's been budgeted, nothing that's been worked with city staff or anybody else to go, well, this is what we're going to do, right? These are just ideas at this point. So, you all can read this, the audience can read this, I'm not going to, I hate to read bullet points. I've already kind of said this, right? The whole point is to reinforce, right? Reinforce what Granville already is, right? I mean, you're recognized by the Green Communities Challenge, you're recognized by your own residents as a high-quality place to live, right? Sustainability is part of the reason people move here, part of the reason we all like living in Granville. This is just another way to make that even more real, and specifically, again, being a tree hugger, specifically, it's to fold those living resources into that sustainability umbrella, right? Make sure that we're doing good, and we're providing the right resources and the right stuff that the wildlife needs to also live here. One thing I do want to highlight here in the last slide or two, might come up in questions, you might have figured this out if you looked at some of those resources, but there's really nothing in this program that is a black or white, you got to do X. I referenced invasive plants, talked about cleanups. Invasive plants is a good example for me to say. For example, NWF doesn't say, you got to get rid of all of your invasive plants. Not because that isn't a good goal, but because it's a really hard thing to do. And so, instead, their entire program is built on choice. Same thing for the individual landowners. When we talk about certification and the habitat, right, with the individual properties, their certification is also about choice. If you look at that form for certification of an individual garden, it doesn't say, do X, Y, and Z. It says, here's 12 choices, pick two or three, right? So, I think that's a very important element and a very important understanding of this program. It's not shoehorning the city into a very specific set of solutions, if that makes sense. As I mentioned again, this isn't something that's going to happen tomorrow. The registration is something that happens very quickly, right? That's very simple and straightforward. The certification is a multi-year effort, and there is no specific deadline or timeline laid upon us for that. So, again, tonight, if the council is comfortable, if I can answer what questions you may have or any concerns you may have, if you're good, the ask would be approval for the ESC to submit a registration, to register the city as a community wildlife habitat with NWF, and that's just $99. That's just a little small, one-time fee for registration. And then it's that commitment, right? It's that pledge and that commitment as a governing body to, you know, support the ESC as we lead over the next few years this certification process. So, that's what we're here for tonight. But again, I'd love to be able to answer questions at whatever time I may have.
I've got a quick question before we open it up for other questions and comments. Sounds like a great program. I thought, yeah, I'd like to get my house registered. So, in your materials, you talk about theoretically, this, the registration for a homeowner would be their responsibility. But has the, MJR, maybe you guys can, or maybe you can address it also. Has there been some conversation about, like, I like the idea of a cost share with the city, or maybe even something beyond that. But did you guys have that kind of a conversation? And what do other cities do? There's like 26 or 36 others in Michigan. How do they do that? Because I love the idea.
Yeah, we did discuss it, and that's actually why it's in the document as an idea, right? The group had considered this idea, in part led by the Community Tree Project, which did the cost share on the trees, right? The tree purchased by residents earlier. And we're like, well, so there's a precedent here, and the council's comfortable with this idea. $20 is not a lot of money. It's cheaper than most trees that you would buy. But my understanding is NWF won't care. They're likely going to want payment from one entity, right? So, it would just be on the council, in the ESC, and the residents to figure out how that cost share would work. But, yeah, we had a conversation.
Yeah, because I like to encourage it to be done. You know, like with the trees, it's not just total, 100% city's going to pay for it, so everybody's kind of invested in it. I like that idea, so.
Yeah, I think there's some logistics we need to work out, and, you know, we had talked through the ideas about that, but I think that's an option, an idea that we had to get buy-in from both the city, as well as residents, or businesses, or schools, or, yeah, go down the road, figure that out.
And I was looking at, you know, like, your garlic mustard poll, which was actually a lot of fun, by the way. And I'm sure there'll be plenty to pull again next year.
Yes.
But not as much as this year. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that.
Like I said.
You are already at the ESC.
A lot of options, yeah, a lot of options. And again, we're not forced to go any specific direction. Huge menu of options that they provide us.
Other thoughts, counsel? It's a small ask, $100.
$99.
$99, actually. I don't want to exaggerate. It's only two digits.
No, I think it's a great idea. I just had a question here, Mitch, about the requirements here for the certification. It looks like our, a city of our size, you're required to have 200 points?
Correct. Yeah, for our current population.
And it looks like you've got about 150 points between all the education outreach requirements. Do you have to do all of those, or?
Yeah, and that point total, that's for any community that goes through this process, they require 150 points.
So, we need 150 then, to get to our 200?
No, two separate sets of points.
Oh, gotcha.
Yep, two separate sets of points. So, 200 habitat certification points, and then 150 for the education outreach. Two separate.
So, then that 200 is comprised of either the home certified, the common areas, or the school center, any combination?
For the certification for the habitat, absolutely. Yep, yep.
All right.
Yes, and you remind me of, I mean, you know, not that we want to get inside the particulars of how you would get these points, but again, it's totally flexible. And some of those points on education outreach, we'll just rack up real quick. I think if the council was so inspired by this idea, you not only approve the ask tonight, but then a month or two from now, you choose to provide a resolution that this has happened, right? That we have registered. That's like 10 points or something out of 150. You know, if you press release, you get another five points. So, that's one of the three categories within that 150 points. So, again, just saying, it's totally flexible.
You know, it also occurs to me that this could have some real benefits for the homeowner. I remember one presentation, I think Jane and the ESC made, maybe it's the tree lord, just about the value of trees, the financial. I mean, we know aesthetically, it's great to have them, but financially, it's very beneficial. I just wonder if this would be kind of a benefit to a homeowner to have a, their property designated as a wildlife habitat?
Having recently moved here from Missouri, and so I went through the home-selling process down there, I did have the opportunity to see from a number of different agents that sustainability, attractive native landscaping, pollinator gardens, Monarch Waystation certification, those things are real, and they are being seen and recognized within the Realtor community. Not in a, like, fundamental, you know, like, not in a structural way, right? But they're popping up in descriptions, their conversations, you know, on-site, yeah.
No comments, counsel? Justin?
Yeah, I would just reiterate, like everyone else has said, I think it's a great program, and I really like the idea of, almost, you know, this is voluntary. You have members of the community, neighbors, working together through education outreach collaboration. That's wonderful. The $99, I don't think anyone's going to be concerned about that. The providing of additional resources, so by doing this, we are making a commitment for the future. So, has the Environmental Sustainability Committee discussed, beyond the cost-sharing aspect of this, what would, what might that look like for future financial obligation on the part of us?
Right. Very good question. And because we haven't actually picked any specific projects, right? We haven't worked out any budgeting, but we are optimistic that, one, there are plenty of things that we could choose to do that are either already programmed, like the Buck Creek watershed cleanup, okay, there's a budget for that, you know, we're not incurring any additional expenses by adding that project to this umbrella, or invasive plant project, which just says very minimal investment. There are bigger ideas, whether it's creating new demonstration gardens for native plants, you know, those would be likely something where we'd sit down with appropriate partners, city staff, look at timelines, and consider the budget, consider how much that might require, consider whether there's grants available, that sort of thing.
Thank you. So, Dennis, if the council is so inclined to support this project, should we pass a resolution tonight, or make a motion to pursue it and pay the registration fee? Randy?
It sounded like tonight, all that's being asked for is an approval for the fee and for the second part of the ask, and that the resolution might be a separate action worth some amount of points after you've done that.
So, is there a motion to approve the?
I have one.
I'm sorry.
One follow-up question. If I ask to have my yard, if you will, put into the program, are there any limitations on modifying my landscaping, or other things that I might wish to do in the future, and/or even getting out of the designation if I choose to in the future?
Short answer would be no. For residential properties, I'm not aware of any required follow-up or recertification through NWF. I believe the larger properties, schools in particular, there is a recertification requirement window, five, 10 years or something.
But if you choose not to, that's totally the property owner's prerogative?
Absolutely.
Comments, questions? Chair?
You know, I know that the official ask tonight is for $99, but I think we're also asking for a buy-in into this, personally, professionally, putting Granville on a map with the Michigan Green Communities Challenge, putting ourselves on a map with the NWF. I think we're all tired of seeing Rockford take all these awards away from West Michigan.
And they're not part of the NWF program.
Right, but they're, but you know, but they're doing all these other things. So, we want to put ourselves on the map, and I think it's a buy-in too, as a council and as a staff, and so I think that's what we're asking for as well.
That sounds like a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay.
Did you get that, Brittany?
Any other discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstrom?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Maringa?
Yes.
Norhug?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas?
Yes, thank you very much for your efforts with us, and continue to help.
Thank you.
Thank you for the support here tonight. Great, time for public comment. Anybody here like to address the council? Please just come on up to the podium, give us your name and address, so Brittany can get that, and tell us what you're thinking about. Hi.
Hi, I'm Nancy Coons. I'm here with my husband, Joe. We live at 4153 Eagle Rock Court. I just wanted to, never done this before, so I just rode it out, and I thought I'd just read it. But we, it's regarding the campers in the driveways, and we picked up, we're new campers. We picked up our new camper last year, and I called the city to ask them, what are the rules for parking in the driveway? And I didn't get a call back. So, I thought, well, okay. I went online, and I looked, my husband and I looked, and we couldn't find anything. Come to find out, I know right where it is now. So, but, so we just assumed, we just kind of looked around and saw what's everybody else doing, kind of thing. So, two weeks ago, on August 15th, Officer Bo Peters came to my house and told me that I needed to remove my travel trailer. And I was, I said, I'm in trouble? Because I was surprised. And he was very nice, and he just explained to me that, you know, the rule's 48 days total, and seven days consecutive. And I said, okay, I, we had no idea. I'm sorry. I said, we'll have it in storage tonight, and so happy to do that. But he said something that kind of concerned me and my husband. He said, there's a gentleman that, in our community, that's driving around and keeping track of who's breaking the rules, keeping tabs. Now, correct me if I'm wrong. But then, that kind of bothered me a little bit, that someone's watching me and watching my camper on my private property. I'm off for zoning ordinances, and I will obey them. I'll be the first to obey them, ask my family, I'm a rule follower. But I didn't like that. And so, anyways, I wanted to verify, and, oh, and then when Bo was there too, I asked him, because I had noticed some people were starting to park their fifth wheels in travel trailers and campers out in the street. And the other night, my husband and I drove past one, and we were like, how safe is that? What if an emergency vehicle needs to get through, or something? So, I asked Bo when he was there, and he said, well, there's different rules for in the street. And I believe he said 48 hours on the street. And I was... And I was thinking, oh, okay, that's, to me, I would not want to load my travel trailer to go on a camping trip in the street. I just wouldn't want to do that. I'd rather be safe in my own driveway. But anyways, I went from there. Officer Peters seemed very frustrated. He said he had a lot of people on his list. And he told me that most people don't even know the zoning rules. And I was like, yeah, I'm one of them. And I was thinking, how can we get people to know the zoning rules? Because then I took it upon myself to drive around to people who had campers in their yard. And I was really surprised what I found out. I found out that some people parked there for a month and no one ever says anything. And then I talked to someone else and they had someone come out last year, the officer came out last year to tell them that apparently this kind of started last year, I'm thinking. Because they were told the same thing, that a gentleman was driving around keeping tabs, not a city employee. And so I just, and everybody I went to but one gentleman, they all didn't know what the rules were for campers in the driveway. So then I called the city. I spoke with Charles or Charlie, one or the other, wonderful man. And he confirmed that this gentleman meets with the city manager once or twice a week to hand in a list of all the people that are, he's tabulating and they've broke the rules apparently. That concerned me. It also concerned me that my neighbor, he said that a neighbor called in and I really wish a neighbor would have just come over and said, hey, do you know there's like a zoning? I would have totally been okay with that. I wouldn't have minded that. But, you know, people do it, they do. And like Charles told me, they're informed based or complaint based, so you don't know till someone calls in and complains. But this gentleman, again, this really concerned my husband and I because to us, the definition of stalking is unwanted or repeat surveillance of an individual or a group towards another person. And my husband works in security and we were like, that kind of bothered us. So again, not really comfortable with that. But it was, it seems that almost everyone who has a camper doesn't know the rules. And I thought, how could we, how could we get them to know the rules? Is that something that, you know, the city mails out like a quarterly flyer or something and it could be in there? Or, yeah, it could also be on the website, I don't know. On the front, like a reminder in the spring? Because see, I can't, camping's so fluid, you know. But we camp from April to the end of October. And not everybody camps, you know, June, July, August, so.
So after we ran into each other last week?
Yeah, that was so interesting.
So undifficult.
I didn't even know you were the mayor. And.
I was just getting my knives sharpened.
Yeah, I know, it was hilarious. So I have to tell you a funny story. The second place I stopped, they have a fifth wheel in their driveway. And I thought I'll stop in because theirs has been sitting there for a while. And wonderful people, and I had only known what you looked like two days ago. Because my husband said, well, let's see who the mayor is and all that. So I'm standing there and I'm talking to them and he walks up. But he's not in a suit or anything. He looks like he just mowed his lawn or something.
Kind of how I always look.
And I said, and my husband will tell you, I can't recognize anybody, I'm just horrible. And I said, are you the mayor? And he said, yeah.
I don't know why.
So anyways, we had a good, healthy discussion and he encouraged me to come here and speak to you guys and so, yeah.
So afterward, I went and I got the rules. Because I'm like, yeah, I know, there's something about consecutive days and total number of days. I think your point's well taken, we appreciate the comments. So maybe we do newsletter, electronic newsletter every other month. And we also do print copies. I'm looking for, so here's a copy, it's called Charting New Courses. Maybe, I think, we probably had things in there before, but maybe front page in the next edition. And Brittany, you know, maybe there's things on the website, maybe they are already, I don't know. But, so I think your point is well taken about just a little enhanced public awareness. It's time to kind of refresh all of our memory. Because again, I needed a copy like I forgot.
Well, now I know too, so it's good. I just wish I hadn't had to learn that way.
And as far as, you know, if there's, if you feel unsafe or whatever, you can talk to our chief. I do know the gentleman and he does stop in and talk to Dennis once in a while. So, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate your comments. Nice to see you again. Anybody else here tonight like to address the council? Just come on up to the podium, give us your name, address. Nobody? Last call? Jack, I see you're here this evening, it's good to have you with us again.
I just had a good time. It's good to be anyplace.
You usually do though, so I just wonder if my son is behaving next to you this evening.
He's doing a great job.
All right, good.
He's critiquing you.
Pardon?
He's critiquing you.
I see he's got a long list there. All right. Next item, under ordinances and resolutions. It's a resolution regarding a noise variance request from Chicago Drive, on Chicago Drive, from Division Avenue to the West City Limit. We're doing some repaving there. Dennis, you want to, you have a memo in there already, you or Charlie? Nighttime repave. And there may be some extra noise?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the city has done this in the past to expedite road construction projects and to minimize traffic disruptions. Reef Rally, the contractor for this, has submitted a request, and you have that in your packet this evening. The project is estimated to last six weeks. The night work is only being promoted, I think, for two nights. Does that sound right, Charlie?
Two nights, yeah.
So not the six-week duration of the project. This night work is actually encouraged by MDOT so that it minimizes the disruption on the traffic. We will get the project done quicker. And if they, if any residents that are in the vicinity have any conflicts or any issues, then they can contact the city and we can deal with those with the contractor. But we don't anticipate the night work to be more than two nights, so that will minimize the impact on residents. Charlie's here to answer any of your questions. Charlie is the contractor here this evening?
No, he's not.
Okay, so Charlie can handle that for you. Okay. I noticed also, we had a letter from a resident who is opposing this. I just, I'm curious, is there anybody else here tonight who would like to be here and speak? Okay, so this is your letter?
I'm suing, so.
Okay, that counts, right? It's been years since I've seen you, so. Okay, so we do have that letter in opposition, just want to make sure that gets noted.
I got a quick comment maybe on that?
Sure, a couple minutes, absolutely.
Well, not only a couple minutes, but you know, I was basing that on the notice that was sent. And that was obviously not very accurate, because now, as you mentioned, it was only two nights that you're thinking about. There was nothing about that. So, you know, that was talking about six weeks of, which I'm questioning anyhow, if it's just resurfacing. I mean, that seems to me that it should be done in a couple of days, you know, a week max. So Charlie, beyond what I was actually writing about, because I was under the assumption that it's going to be six weeks.
So this is good news.
That would have helped if I knew it was only two nights.
The project is not just only resurfacing, so there will be handicap ramps redone, some sidewalk work done, all the manhole structures will be, the casings will be taken off and readjusted. There's a lot more involved. The timeframe for the project is six weeks. That's why he put it in his letter, because he has to give us a timeframe. But we don't know exactly what two nights he's going to be working, but he's only going to be working two nights. Both nights between seven and eight, he'll start milling. And between ten thirty, eleven thirty, he'll start repaving inner lanes, outer lanes.
I understand, I understand. That's not necessary, you don't have to explain all that, I understand. I live, I work construction also. The only thing that would have just helped, you know, if it was actually said it's not just the resurfacing, it's six weeks term, so.
Counsel, thank you. Great, thank you very much. Counsel, you have before you a resolution. Are there any other questions for Charlie or Dennis on this matter? Of course, we have a resolution in front of us. Resolution thirty-three twenty-three, a resolution approving Reef Rally Construction Company's request for variance from the city of Granville Noise Ordinance. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So, support.
Motion, support. Any other comments or questions? Brittany, would you call the roll, please?
Yep. Councilmember Steenstrom?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Maryga?
Yes.
Norho?
Yes.
And Mayor Mott?
Yes. Under the consent agenda tonight, this would be, approval would be in the best interest of the city because there are some purchases there. We have the Clean Water July Report and the Fire and Investment Report also from July. We have the Planning Commission Minutes from August seventeen. We also have a proclamation, Prisoner of War Missing in Action Recognition Day. That's something we've done for quite a few years. And there is also ceremony that's at the Veterans Home that often I attend. Also, there is a resolution number thirty-three twenty-four for charitable gaming license for Grand River Makerspace. And I don't know if, Kyle, you want to talk about that at all? Also, authorization for assessing legal services agreement. And that would be hiring Lorene Birdsall, who we know from previous matters, to represent the city in one particular case where there would be a conflict with Farnham, our city attorney. Also, we have some miscellaneous purchase orders and requests. The City Hall Exterior Cleaning and the Department of Public Works Building Repairs, there's memos on there. And also the water tank power washing. I like to power wash, but I'm not sure I'd like to have that regular job. Maybe, you know, like a little section would be kind of fine, but. It definitely needs it, I go past there. So, Kyle, did you want to talk, just answer any questions? Anybody may have, that's one of the more interesting ones there. And we have a resolution thirty-three twenty-four for that, so.
So, I'm part of, I'm on the board for the Grand River Makerspace. And I brought my bodyguards tonight. This is Patrick Kern, and he's the president of our Makerspace. And this is Barry.
Susan Kane.
Kane. Okay. Okay. And he's also on our board. You know how that goes when you get up there?
Yep.
The Makerspace right now currently is running a campaign to collect donations from the first hundred founders. And we're doing like a thousand dollars for a founding member. And Steelcase has come on board, Little Spaces has come on board, the Janders.
I'm glad you're pronouncing that.
Yeah, I think Barry can pronounce it better than I can. Janerson?
Jander Noah Foundation, Mike Jander Noah.
And then we have a lot of members that have also started making reoccurring membership donations along with miscellaneous donations. So we're getting quite a bit of support. And storage units are starting to get full with saws. And we have all different types of equipment already gathered up. And we have a current little lab with just 3D printers and a vinyl cutter and some things like that. But what we're looking for is, the Confluence Festival is in Grand Rapids, the twenty-third of September. And we would like to raffle off a laser. It would be in a cabinet and it would, some of you have seen the tags that I've made for, like our name tags and things like that. We'll do things like that, we'll cut out things, it will engrave in metal. So the item is about five hundred dollars. We plan on selling probably five hundred tickets at ten dollars apiece to try and raise some funds so that we can get in a location. And we're continuing to campaign in other ways. So basically, what a Makerspace is, if you've never been around one, it's, you kind of like buy a gym membership, but you get power tools and technology. And it is a huge thing for a community because it brings people in and they collaborate on projects. People that know how to use a machine quite often will share their skill with someone else. I've been the benefit of that many times. Most major cities have a Makerspace. Flint, Kalamazoo, Ann Arbor, Muskegon. And we, Pat and I are both from Granville, so we would love it if we were on this side. But there's also a lot of opportunities in Grand Rapids. But right now, our legal address is here in Granville. And so we were asking for your approval so that we can go to the state and actually get the gaming license. You don't do the gaming license, you just approve us to be able to go forward.
Okay, great, great explanation. And we have that resolution as part of the consent agenda, that's resolution thirty-three twenty-four, so. Good, thank you, thank you. Nice to hear and learn a little bit more about the Grand River Makerspace. I know I've seen some of the things that you've made and it's pretty remarkable, so. So is there any discussion before we do a motion and support on the approval of the consent agenda? Anything, anybody?
Chair? I just had a question. I don't think in my time on council, we've had a legal services fee agreement based on a conflict of interest. Is this somebody that we've used in the past when we've had this before? I know your memo explained all of that, Charlie, but is this something?
Yeah, good question. So since I've been here, there's only been a couple of conflicts that Farnham has. And they take it serious whether there's a conflict or not. So in those past instances, I just answered the appeals myself as the assessor with the thought of that if it ended in a tax tribunal hearing, I would address that situation at that point in time and bring an attorney in. In this case, just due to the busy nature of the assessing office and things that would be going on at City Hall, I felt it appropriate to bring in legal services ahead of time to assist the city in this matter.
If we need to use them? Or are we using them, would we be using them already?
We, I just have them available to be used if I need them. So, and that would be instances if we need to file motions with the tax tribunal or there is some, you know, legal issue that comes up or we need legal opinion. And certainly if it was a tax appeal trial, we would have to have an attorney as representative.
I understand, thank you.
So it's essentially a retainer for her services?
It is, it's a contract for services, it's billed by the hour. It's an hourly contract, so if I need her, she would bill us hourly for her services. And if I do not need her, then I would not use her.
She's still a level four assessor too?
She is a level four assessor.
Randy just mentioned, for those people who haven't been in Granville for a long time, Lorene was our assessor for a while. Right? Number of years? Yeah, number of years, and then she went and got her law degree as well. Any other comments or questions about any item on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So, support.
Any other comments or questions? Brittany, would you call the roll, please?
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Maryga?
Yes.
Norho?
Yes.
Steenstrom?
Yes.
And Mayor Mott?
Yes. Dennis, city managers report, a few authorizations requests.
Chief Anglin has a presentation on the PSLO, MOU.
It's just a standard renewal with the city and Granville Public Schools. I don't care if it's for the next three years, we maintain the same sixty-forty split in coverage of our high school-based SRO and second SRO that we have in a few years. It's based on the middle school.
So Chief, just wanted to confirm that it's not just the public schools that the officers, that they're involved in the parochial schools as well?
Yes, sir. They're based on a lot of the public schools because they're providing funding for that. But we do still support all the schools that are in our city. We have done civilian response to active shooter events training with both the parochial schools this past spring. We confer with them on their emergency response plans. We've assisted them with their applications for the state grant for the mapping of their facilities. So they do have coverage. In addition to our two SROs, we have a daily goal to try and get one of our regular patrol officers in each school building every school day, depending on call volume, some days we make it, some days we don't. But we do support both schools in more than just the. But we do support both schools in more than just the school resource officers division.
Any other questions for the chief or Dennis? It's been a very successful program. I mean, I can't imagine not having it.
We both get huge benefits out of it, so.
Is there a motion to authorize entering into this agreement with the Granville Public Schools for the police school liaison officer?
So, support.
Motion support. Any other comments or questions? Brittany, would you call the roll, please?
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Maryga?
Yes.
Norho?
Yes.
Steenstrom?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
And Mayor Ma?
Yes.
The next item is a request for a special beer and wine liquor license for the Ball Fest Beer Tent in the DDA parking lot. I think Heather's here.
I'm here.
Okay, and Therese is also here from the DDA, in case you have questions.
Good evening. Good to see you again.
It's me again.
Yeah, that's great.
Everything's very straightforward again. Pretty much same layout as the music and last year. We did expand the area a little bit this year, just based on if we need to use a little bit more space, we need to tell the state ahead of time that we're gonna use it, because we can't go back and change it. But Therese and I were talking about maybe allowing people to use that extra side little parking lot or the grass area to bring their own chairs to kind of spread out a little bit, so we're not so congested. But other than that, everything's really the same as the past few times.
Do you need volunteers?
We will need volunteers, yes.
How do we, how do we volunteer? Because I checked IDs one time.
I know. You like checking IDs.
I do.
See how old everybody is?
Well, that way, if I can't remember their name, I can just look at the, oh, yeah. She knows everybody's name.
I know. Yeah, you can just give me an email and let me know, and I can send you that, yep.
Questions for Heather about this event? Okay, is there a motion? Is this something that we authorize, Chief Anglin? Motion to authorize Chief Anglin to sign this special license application from the Granville Johnson Chamber of Commerce?
So, support.
Motion support. Any other comments, questions? Volunteering?
All right, at least just come down and drink. Listen to music.
On the good weather, right?
Yes.
Guaranteed?
Guaranteed.
Brittany, would you call the roll, please?
Maryga?
Yes.
Norho?
Yes.
Steenstrom?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
And Mayor Ma?
Yes.
Dennis, Millrais Park Plan Approval?
Yes, the last item under the report this evening, Mr. Mayor, is a request for the council to approve the Millrais Park Revised Plan. The park plan originally was developed over three years ago, and a trust fund grant was applied for and received for this project. At the time, it was budgeted to cost a little over $500,000. That was three years ago. A lot has happened in the last three years. We have a materials shortage. We had a pandemic. We had lockdowns. We have more recent inflationary pressures on material costs. And so I asked OCBA, the city's consultant on this project, to update their cost estimates, and their new cost estimate stands at $1.29 million for the project. So, being that there is such a significant increase, and the city doesn't have all that money budgeted for this project, I asked them to revise the plan with the focus on reducing the cost estimate. So what they have done is, instead of taking the trail that was originally planned across Buck Creek with a bridge, I asked them to remove that and some other cost items, and they've reduced the total cost of this revised plan down to $798, $397, and some chains, change. This was then discussed with DNR and Eagle, who have been the state agencies that are overseeing the trust fund grant. And then they went along with that and approved it, and it has gone now to the Parks Board, who has approved it and recommends the revised plan with a cost estimate of $798, $397. Now, when we go through, Charlie and I have been through the new budget for this project, and there are a number of items that have been conservatively estimated for the project. And we expect that when we do let for bids, request for bids for this and open bids, that some of these cost items will be pared down quite a bit more. So we're recommending that the council, I'm trying to move to the, there we go, the fold-out page. The trade-off here with DNR, with removing the bridge, is they're very satisfied with the fact that we would add an outlook along Buck Creek. And that was one of the main goals of the project itself, was not only to remove the barn that is there now at Millrais Park, install a, would you call it a pavilion? But also to grant access to residents to Buck Creek, and allow people to view Buck Creek and the nature that's around there. So an additional creek outlook would be installed in lieu of a bridge, saving some money and achieving the original mission of the project. Okay, that's it. If you have any questions or any concerns, I can try to answer them.
You probably have. I'm thinking some of the neighbors might be happy that that trail is not going on the south side, at least right now. But the trail, and if I can just show on the map, this is the trail F and G going to, still, that's still happening? Right, okay.
The only difference is that the trailway that was planned on the opposite side of Buck Creek will be moved out to a future phase.
Just wanted to really make sure. So that other new section of trail will give some great views to Buck Creek as well. Just observations.
And you're right, from what I have been educated on the history of this project, that the residents on the other side of the creek weren't in complete agreement that this was a good project. That does not mean that this is, that part of the project is gonna go away. It's just gonna be delayed when we have another funding source for that.
Copy, Jack?
Yeah, I have several questions. I guess the first question, I think, is just a simple answer. What was our original budget for this three years ago, even with the grant? Josh, maybe Josh?
What was the total that he said? What was it, five something?
Yeah, Jane Helmey, was it 531, five?
I don't know. I have never seen the grant. I've never seen any of the specs, the information in the packet. First, I've seen anything of this grant. It's not even in the CIP, so unfortunately, I can't.
It was a little over $500,000.
Yeah, that's what, I thought it was five, so.
It was a 50/50 split.
Correct.
It would grant cover the half, and the city was gonna cover the other half through the special project fund.
So that, that answer leads me to my next question, is, and I know in the notes here, it talks about staff developing a new funding plan, recommendations for an additional 300 minus maybe some other items that may be pared down. Great, I love the creativity. I love the creativity to reduce the plan down to other items and include the lookout and walkout. I guess my question is a little broader, and maybe it's for Charlie and/or Jane too, is, you know, we acquired that home, and we were intending to use that bridge, and we were intending to use the maintenance building over there. I guess, I guess I'm curious where we're going with that piece of this puzzle as well.
That piece of puzzle, the bridge, I've got an estimate of like $120,000 to put a concrete deck on there, new railing, clean up the beams, and it'll last for 40, 50 years or more. That way, we'll be able to drive different vehicles over there. I'm waiting for some cost to redo that, upgrade that building back there down the road. My intent at that building is for Thrice to use as a storage area for DDA's council, so she's not paying rental fees somewhere. The house, council is talking to selling, turning down, letting it sit. Personally, I think the council should make a decision soon what to do, because winter's coming. You're gonna be paying heating bills, water issues, the whole nine yards. I think we should sell that building, speaking on my own path, take dead money, put it into the bridge, and put it into, towards the remodeling of that barn that's back there. That's just my thoughts and process.
Thank you, and I may be opening some cans of worms here, but I don't care. I think this is important to know, and I know that Parks has gone through this with a fine-tooth comb, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's kind of two separate projects that are now sort of linked a bit. This project started back in 2019 or so with the grant application. We had to go twice to actually get funded. Then we acquired the property more recently, and there's a different grant application that's out right now for that piece of it. But, you know, I mean, obviously, they're related and kind of connected, and we want to sort of be in sync with what we're doing here. Just another quick thing to mention, though, that was taken out of the original plan, that was some cost, was, you might recall on the north side of this, along Carlton Park, there was originally supposed to be like six or eight parking spaces. That was removed as well. They were supposed to be permeable amen type parking spaces, but there was pretty significant cost there too. Plus, now we have a floodplain issue that we're trying to work with here too. The floodplain is extended much further than it was previously, and so that's part of the additional cost too, right, is the soil removal and disposal and some of the requirements that go with that now being in a floodplain.
You know, we were also anxious to get those new flood maps.
We should, yeah, we should have gotten this all done before that happened.
Careful what we hope for, right? Because it wasn't, didn't go the direction that we were.
Yeah, I know. Cuts both ways.
Yeah, so I guess I just wanted to make sure Jane at least is comfortable. I know we're just getting bids right now, and I know that's the first step. I guess I just wanted to make sure you're comfortable with, you know, these creative plans to potentially fund this. I'm sure you're on it, Jane. You're very smart. You do a great job of what you do, so I wanted to make sure that you're part of this, this as well.
Where are the residents who are questioning their property versus city property? Are they the residents on Iris here?
Yes, on the north side of the creek.
Okay.
There's a basketball court.
South side. North side of the road on Iris.
Okay. Kind of your neighbors, Jack.
Totally my neighbors. They, believe me.
And now that it's been stated, does that calm down? I haven't heard anything. I haven't heard anything. It's calmed down now that?
I haven't heard anybody complain.
Okay, they've come and talked to us at Parker Rock a few times. They'll have some other concerns.
Okay, so, let's see, Dennis. We're voting to accept the revised plan and. Really to relate it, kind of, because we don't know what that is yet, so just this plan?
Yes, so this will allow Charlie to develop bid documents, solicit bids, open bids, then we'll have a better idea about what the cost of the project is, and we'll be back to present it to the council.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So, support.
And support. Any other comments or questions? So the beautiful property that's completed, and even more people will be able to get to enjoy Buck Creek and nature and shade and wildlife. Brittany, would you call the roll, please?
Yep, Norho?
Yes.
Steenstrom?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Maryga?
Yes.
And Mayor Ma?
Yes. Dennis, anything else? That's it? Okay. Josh, let's start with you this evening. Councilmember comments?
Yeah, I don't have anything to.
Justin?
I didn't have anything until Charlie made his comments about selling the property and utilizing the revenue, and I just want to go on record saying that I support that plan, and I think that's the direction we should move. And also, if we could get that on the agenda soon, then we can, even if I'm in the minority, we can make a decision on that.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
No additional comments?
Yes, I also wish to associate myself with very wise words of our DEW director, say that we should sell that property and use the money to fund the refurbishing of the bridge and whatever else we can use for it, to defray the cost of developing that property, which was the original plan. That's all.
I just made a note that I think that the 34th Street House should be on an agenda item coming up, so we can discuss.
Sounds like it's gonna be on real soon. That's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking.
Well, if Charlie says so.
I don't have anything in particular, so hope everybody has a good evening and enjoys the rest of the summer. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, support.
Support. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Great, thanks. Have a good evening, everybody.